Harding.
Here.
Hug.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Rowe.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Goodwin.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Pete Festerson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to do with equal rights and justice against one nation, a free country, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to take one minute to talk about our Sister Cities organization. I had the honor to represent Omaha in a delegation to Carlantini, Italy, last week with our Sister Cities organization. We met with Mayor Stefio and reaffirmed the Omaha-Carlantini connection between our two cities. We also had a chance to dedicate a new amphitheater in Carlantini to former Councilmember Sabi Anzaldo. His entire family was there. It was a very touching tribute to them and to him. And then lastly, we celebrated their Santa Lucia Festival. Ours just turned 101. Theirs just turned 405. So it was very well done, very strong connections to the community. Some may not realize that 2/3 of our Italian-American population here in Omaha can trace this genealogy straight back to Carlantini, so it was very meaningful for everyone involved. We look forward to continuing that relationship for a long time to come. The whole delegation is still over there, so I want to congratulate them on a successful trip and a safe trip home. Thanks.
An Italian fest is this weekend.
So we're now...
Is that 102 then?
We're catching up.
An affidavit publication is on file and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. A reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If you would like your comments entered into the public record, you may email the city clerk's office at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. The councilmembers receive these emails and we read them. Finally, councilmembers may ask members of the audience back up for clarifying questions, but not for extra time to speak. At this time, we have a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Brinker Harding for George Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll ask Brian if he would come up and if the family would like to come up now or after I'm done, if you want to stay seated until then. Welcome.
Welcome.
It reads as follows. Whereas George Reed began his service to the democratic process and the Douglas County Election Commission in 1960, working his first election as a poll worker and has not missed an election since that year. And whereas Mr. Reed has volunteered in more than 80 elections over the past six decades, becoming a trusted and steadfast presence in Douglas County elections. And whereas, in 2010, Mr. Reed was inducted into the Poll Worker Hall of Fame as part of the inaugural group of poll workers in Douglas County to receive this honor. And whereas, poll workers are essential to maintaining a healthy democracy and ensuring the integrity of the voting process in Douglas County, which mobilizes up to 3,000 poll workers for each countywide election. And whereas, Mr. Reed is recognized for his extensive knowledge, sense of commitment, and remarkable consistency, which have made him the bedrock of the volunteer program. And whereas, Mr. Reed is recognized for his extensive knowledge, sense of commitment, and it looks like I'm reading the same paragraph again because it got repeated. So. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Omaha, that this board proudly recognizes and honors George Reed for his decades of dedication to the democratic process and his unwavering commitment to the Douglas County Election Commission and its voters that he serves. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this 26th day of August, 2025. Mr. Cruz, I'll ask you to be in, and then we'd like to hear from Mr. Reed as well.
Sure, I'll make this short. Brian Cruz, Douglas County Election Commissioner. The Election Commission conducts all elections in Douglas County, the city of Omaha elections. About 85% of our voters are in the city of Omaha. But, you know, poll workers are the backbone of our democracy. As you can see by the numbers we just heard, poll workers have answered the call through peacetime, through wartime, through special elections, through recall elections, through scheduled elections, and through the pandemic, of which Mr. Reed proudly worked both in that May of 2020 after the pandemic started, and then in November, continuing his service. So, you know, we couldn't do this without the poll workers, and we thank them. If anybody is interested in being a poll worker, I'll make my pitch since I'm here. Please go to our website at votedouglescounty.com and go under the Election Worker tab at the top. You can also call our office at 444-VOTE. So my deputy, Chris Carruthers, is with me here today. We pretty much go everywhere together as partners regarding the elections because we are a nonpartisan office, as we all know. So I would just again say we're having our ceremony tomorrow afternoon at 2:30 at our office at 122nd and Center. The public is invited. Secretary of State Bob Evans is going to be there tomorrow with some additional awards and words for George. And so with that, I would just like to say it's pretty remarkable. Our nation will be 250 years old next year, and he's worked more than a quarter of the elections of our nation, if you take 65 times four. So with that, you all want to hear from him? I'll turn it over. George, take it away.
I appreciate the counselors that they've done for us in supporting the elections because when you work at the polls themselves, that's where the tire meets the road, so you know what kind of support we're actually getting, and it has been good from here. It's been a good working for the Election Commission. I must say, we probably have the most honest elections around, but you see it when you actually work at the elections. So I appreciate everything you've done for us. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And I just make a couple of comments. George said he's served under 14 election commissioners, and his family came, his wife is here, and his daughter traveled from Boston today to be with us. So again, thank you, George, and thank you to your family. Thanks, Brinker. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
George? Come back up for a second, please. Hi, George. I got a very important question for you. You said you worked under 14 different election commissioners. Who is your favorite?
Well, actually, I had some really good ones. I started with Sam Cooper, and then I went to, boy, it goes back ways, Jerry Hassett. Hassett and I became pretty good friends afterwards, and then on up through him. We worked for the mayor when he was in this office. Oh, boy, trying to think back, 14 of us, a bunch.
All right. I withdraw my question. I will put you on the spot. Thank you for your commitment to service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to increase the general fund and community service programs by $50,000 for the Heartland Hope Mission.
I will open the public hearing. Are there any proponents here today on item number 6? I'm sorry. Councilmember Rowe, I apologize. You're recognized.
You know, the next six or seven, eight items on the agenda are opportunities for each of us in our council districts to appropriate $50,000, up to $50,000 into primarily community service projects or things that we can do in our districts. And I wanted to move approval on item number 6. Number 6 is a mission that's near and dear to my heart. Their Heartland Hope Mission started in South Omaha, actually, as a food pantry, and then expanded into Millard Area at 156th and Industrial Road. And they provide, you know, basic human services every day, whether it be a food pantry, or diapers for a new mom, or education services, that kind of thing. And so they're near and dear to my heart. I've been to both locations, seen their work, and really appreciate what they do, and I'd like to move approval of this 50,000. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Let's do the opponents and proponents.
Thanks, Don. I promise I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Is there any other proponents on item number 6 here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents on item 6? Public hearing is closed, and we had a motion and a second. No further lights. Rowe call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 7, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to increase the general fund and community service programs by $50,000 for the Omaha Parks Foundation.
I will open the public hearing. And who's this? Councilmember Melton, proponent.
Thank you. I'm... Thank you. My 50,000, as I've done in previous years, I've been looking in different neighborhoods, in parks, and wanting to do things for kind of improved maintenance in our various parks. And this year, I picked Sunny Slope Park. Their tennis court is in desperate need to be resurfaced, and I know there wasn't really money in the budget to do so. But I would like to note, although I'm allocating 50,000 to the Omaha Parks Foundation, the reason it's going to the Parks Foundation instead of straight into the Parks budget, it's because this project actually costs more than 50,000, and the neighborhood is raising the additional money. And so, which I think is great. So we'll be allocating this, and then Omaha Parks is also assisting. I think Sunny Slope's raised close to 3,000. The estimated cost of the project is going to be around 60,000 or more. So if you'd like to donate to Sunny Slope's project, you can go to the Omaha Parks Foundation website, and you can donate to the Sunny Slope project, if you're inclined to do so. So we're hoping to have that money raised in the next couple of months, but I love it. It's how we come together and how the neighborhood's coming together. They're not just asking for the city to do it all themselves, and they're actually working towards it. And so I'm happy to allocate this, and I hope I get the support of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and second. Rowe call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 8, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to increase the general fund and community service programs by $35,000 for the Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education, and $15,000 for the furniture project.
The public hearing is open on item number 8. I know Mr. Vecchio is here on behalf of the $35,000 that I earmarked for the Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education. Everybody knows that when we build our communities, there's a tremendous need for building trade, men and women, to build our communities and our infrastructure, and our state, and our city, and our nation. Mr. Vecchio is here today on behalf of the Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education to talk briefly about what that money is used for and what the organization does. Good afternoon, Mr. Vecchio.
Good afternoon, Council President Begley. Thank you for the opportunity today, as well as your colleagues here on City Council. The Nebraska Center for Workforce Development and Education is just here, is the Nebraska Registered 501(c)(3). And our primary mission is create opportunities for those individuals, to expose them in the various skilled trades, occupations that are here, that are available in the local area. Part of the challenge is addressing the skill gap, because for every, you know, five people that we have aging out or retiring of the skilled trades, we have one coming in. So our primary focus is working with Omaha Public Schools as a very loose, I'll use the term loose, partnership with them. It's been going for three years straight, where we have a trade camp series that happens throughout... Well, it did start in the summer. Now it's expanded into the school year because there's so many students that are interested in pursuing various skilled trades and participating in our camps, where we do a very immersive experience, where we bring them in to a different trade, whether that's a three-day camp or a five-day camp, where they learn what it is to spend a day in a life, and a sheet metal worker, an iron worker, an electrician, you name it. And by doing that and exposing these kids in the various skilled trades, we're trying to keep, obviously, jobs, skilled jobs, sustainable jobs, high-paying, high-wage jobs in the Omaha community, and that's our primary mission, is to keep these students here and to provide opportunities for them for more sustainable career in the future.
Thanks, Jim. And can we get your name and address for the record?
Yeah, I should have started with that. I'm sorry.
All right.
Jim Vecchio, 12016 Winward Avenue, 68046.
Thanks, Jim, and that's a great summary of the great connections that we're making with our younger men and women in high schools to get them exposed to what great potential of jobs in the building trade. So appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
The next one is 15,000 hours for the furniture project. I believe Mr. Hoppy is here today. I got to know Drew Gurkin from my youth, and he created this several years ago, and it helps those in need in our community. A lot of people saw the major issues they were having at City View Apartments in my district, and Drew Gurkin and his team at the furniture project immediately started helping the men and women through no fault of their own that were dealing with terrible challenges with the vacation of that apartment building there. So, Mr. Hoppy, I appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Matt Hoppy. It's 2248 South 186th Street, 68130. And I am the executive director at the Furniture Project. The Furniture Project delivers, excuse me, the Furniture Project delivers furniture, housewares, and hope into the homes of our neighbors during their time of need. In 2024, we furnished 1,622 family homes, distributed over 2,800 beds, and served 5,200 vulnerable individuals in our community. Working with more than 225 local social service organizations, the Furniture Project serves victims of domestic violence and trafficking, children in foster care, individuals transitioning out of homelessness, and many, many more. Recently, the Furniture Project was called upon to furnish the homes of 45 families displaced from the City View Apartments. This grant will help the Furniture Project continue to provide furniture and household items to our neighbors completely free of charge. Thank you to President Begley and the entire City Council for your consideration and awarding of this grant.
Thanks, Matt. And I'll also conclude that you're located on 108th and J. I've been out there. I haven't had a tour, but I've dropped furniture off. If I'm not taking it to Drew at his house out there, and it's a tremendous organization, you guys have helping people, so I'm glad to support it today.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first met Drew, I don't know how I came across him, but I think the first time I had some furniture, he came over in a minivan.
Yeah.
And this is probably, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, maybe, and the growth that he is, I mean, it's just incredible work that he does, and I believe if I remember right, that didn't Mike Rowe end up giving him or helping fund the larger step van so that he could move?
Yeah.
And I think it's an incredible story, and I don't know, Danny, if I heard you say it, but, I mean, Drew's a firefighter, and appreciate his service to the community in that regard. And then with this incredible project, I was actually walking through a church last Saturday and looked down, and there was a box of information for the Furniture Project, and it's just amazing how he's grown this project, and he gave from his heart, and I'm so glad that you're funding part of your 50,000 to Drew's efforts.
Thanks. Thank you. No further lights. Need them... Thank you. Motion and second. Rowe call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 9, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to increase the general fund in parks and facilities by $45,000 and police uniform patrol bureau by $5,000.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 9. Proponents, Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Many may notice a theme in these amendments. A lot of them have to do with park improvements and park maintenance. That's something I think all of us are very interested in pursuing, and definitely something we heard during our public hearing on the budget. So I feel this is responsive to that particular concern. And this item will allocate $45,000 to Florence Park improvements for a total of $65,000 to that park. It needs it badly. It needs new picnic tables. It needs new merry-go-rounds, new swing sets, and it's a very important part of that neighborhood business district right at 30th and State. This park is actually in District 2, just across the street from District 1, but as we frequently do, we're partnering on these concerns, and I know it'll make a difference-maker for the Florence community. The second part of this amendment is $5,000 to a permanent speed monitor on 30th Street, right in the Florence area. We had a serious incident there about a year ago near the Cran Castle, which is a daycare. Someone speeding and crashed over the sidewalk into that business. This is the issue in Florence when we talk about speeding on 30th Street and truck traffic that we're still trying to address from a long-term perspective, but we think this will help. This will go directly to the Police Department, who has agreed to post this sign in that area permanently. And then lastly, this is not actually part of this amendment, but I have some Florence people here, so I want you to know, we have confirmed also in the 2026 budget is still the $5 million for North Ridge Drive repaving for the first time ever in that community. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. Rowe call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 10, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to increase the general fund in parks and facilities by $3,000 and police uniform patrol bureau by $15,000. Increase general fund in community service programs by $20,000 for Victory Boxing, $5,000 for Omaha Parks Foundation, $4,000 for South Omaha Museum, and $3,000 for South Omaha Neighborhood Association.
The public hearing on item number 10 is now open. Proponents, Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you heard from the clerk, I'm spreading that 50,000 out over six different organizations, $20,000 to Victory Boxing for the support, the wonderful work that they do. There is a couple of specific cameras I'd like to encourage the Omaha Police Department to buy to use for surveillance and monitoring illegal dumping, and so we'll give them $15,000 in hopes that they take my advice on which cameras to buy. They're not obligated to. $5,000 Omaha Park Foundation for the Christmas tree lights downtown this year, $4,000 to South Omaha Museum with the intent to do an exhibit recognizing the history of the South Omaha South Side Terrace. As we start to see those buildings come down, I thought now would be a good time to try to capture that history. And $3,000 to Sona, South Omaha Neighborhood Association, $3,000 to help them in their efforts and their commitment to the community, $3,000 to Omaha Parks, and specifically, it's to buy a storage-type unit. So the Blue Bucket Project will have a place to store their cleanup supplies. Blue Bucket Project has been doing wonderful work in cleaning up a lot of parks, and it's been dedicated a lot of time to Spring Lake Park, but the problem they have is they have to bring all their equipment and their cleanup tools, and this will give them, hopefully, a place where they don't have to take that equipment home, and don't have to be stored at somebody's house. It can be onsite to make better use of their time. And last but not least, I think that's it. So I move to approve.
Got a motion. Okay, got a motion to approve. Is there any other... Motion and a second. Are there any other proponents? Item number 10. Seeing none, is there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. We got a motion and a second. No further lights. Rowe call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 11, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to increase the general fund in parks and facilities by $45,000 and increase general fund in community service programs by $5,000 for North Omaha Music and Arts.
The public hearing on item number 11 is now open. Proponents, Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I echo my colleague, Councilmember Festerson, and clearly you can see there's a theme, clean and green, parks preparation. I do appreciate his designation to the Florence Park, and so when I reached out to the Parks Department to see what other parks in my district might need a little upkeep, initially, they said that some of the bigger parks, like Miller Park and Coons Park, had already received some level of upgrade, not necessarily saying that they're finalized and complete. But, so I then started looking at how we could expand city services around clean and green initiatives. Many of you guys know that that's dear to my heart, and not just because we want to see spaces beautified, but also when you can clean up a vacant lot, maybe put a small fence around it, you can lower crime by 21%. So these designations actually matter, and so I'm piloting something new that I hope that we can get some traction on, and that is funding dollars to our business improvement districts for additional services that they might need throughout the year, like parade cleanup, you know, parade preparation, and other types of maintenance services that BIDs usually operate within. And so, and then with the $5,000, although it's just a start, I wanted to support the culture and arts for my district through supporting North Omaha Music and Arts. It is a tremendous organization. I see Mr. Murray and his wife here today, and I'll let him have a few words if he chooses. But not only does it support emerging artists, but also educates youth, and so I'm excited to support that endeavor as we look to grow and expand the cultural district along North 24th Street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Oh, that's okay.
Tell us a little bit about North Omaha Music and Arts, please.
Proponent, correct? Proponent?
Proponent, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council. Good to see you again. My name's Dana Murray, executive director of North Omaha Music and Arts, 2510 North 24th Street. I know all of you, sort of, most of you know what we're about. You were here at the beginning when you guys voted on us to get our building, and I think at that time, you know, I came in with a lot of high bar goals. at that time, you know, I came in with a lot of high bar goals and I think what I said to you was I, I'm someone that does what they say. And I'm very proud to this day, because we set a high bar when we first came in, we've been in the building now almost three years. I'm proud of our community partners, which include the Union of Contemporary Art, the 24th Street BID, uh, boy, I'm old. Empowerment Network, Culture House, the Nebraska Writers Collective, those in the community, outside the community, OPS School Districts, Omaha Performing Arts, Omaha Symphony, Opera Omaha, Omaha Observatory Music, UNO, UNL. We've served over 10,000 young people to date. We've also become a destination. At the time, we weren't really doing a lot of shows there and I think I came in and you guys voted on us to get a liquor license for our venue to hold national acts, local acts. And to date, we do about 145 shows or events a year. We've turned it to a real destination, not just for the community. Actually, most of our constituents are outside of the community and it was interesting because a lot of people told me we weren't going to be able to do that when we first came down there and it has become a spot. So if you haven't been, I recommend all of you, I welcome all of you to come down. We've recently done a pretty major renovation to the entire venue. We've also built in piano lab for our education, because that is the backbone of what we are. A drum lab, we have a broadcast lab, we have dance studio, we have a bass lab. So we are more education than performance, but probably somewhat equal. And that's, that's, that's a heavy, heavy, heavy lift. To be honest, if I'd known how big this lift was going to be when I first came in, I might have given it a second guess, but it is extremely rewarding, what we can do in that community because a lot of the problems in the community are almost unquantifiable. You can't look at data sheets and analytics and come up with solutions a lot of times, but I do know that the arts provide young people with motivation, with self-assuredness, and it gives them focus. And living on a block where a lot of the crime in this city happens, where just a few weeks ago, there was someone murdered at a major event there, I have a sense of urgency with making things happen. So it's not about getting on a soapbox and talking about, oh, this is cool, no, this is real stuff, right? So I appreciate the opportunity to get a grant from, um, thank you. And yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second, no further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 12, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to increase revenues in the Keno Fund by $150,000 and increase appropriations in the Keno Fund Community Service Programs by $37,500 each for Food Bank of the Heartland, Saving Grace Perishable Food Rescue, Together Inc., and Heart Ministry Center.
The public hearing on item number 12 is open. Proponents, Councilmember Festerson, you are recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. As you know, the City Council functions as the city's, the City Council's Finance Committee functions as the city's Keno Committee and this body approved a new Keno Contracting Arrangement with the City of Kearney in recent weeks that actually is already in effect and already producing a management fee, 2% of gross proceeds for the City of Omaha this year. But realizing we're talking about the 2026 budget, what I'm proposing with this amendment is to capture that revenue that otherwise has not been budgeted in 2026 for $150,000. We know both from the Keno operator and from our own finance estimates, that's a conservative estimate. We believe that management arrangement will produce $250,000, but I think it's important we approach that conservatively as that, as that begins. And it would capture this $150,000 and budget it to, to four trusted partners of the city when we talk about fulfilling basic needs throughout the city, our food pantries in particular. And the need is great. One in eight adults in our metropolitan area is food insecure. One in five of those are kids. These four entities, Saving Grace Perishable Food Rescue, Food Bank of the Heartland, The Heart Ministry, and Together Inc. are servicing these communities citywide and I know we'll shepherd these funds very diligently as they try to meet these basic needs to our food pantries and to those families in need. Sadly, I think this need will get worse in the next, in the coming months, given the federal cuts to the SNAP benefits. I know will impact these pantries and put more pressure on them, so this is meant as a one-time influx to try and help them address that issue as we go forward here. So I think some of them are here to speak to this item, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any proponents here today which, to speak on this item?
There's a couple of us. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Tim Williams. I'm the Government Affairs Officer with Food Bank for the Heartland, 10525 J Street, 68127. So I'm here today representing the Food Bank as well as our 168 pantry, meal provider, backpack, mobile pantry, and child feeding sites that we partner with across the Omaha, the Omaha Metro and the thousands of Omaha neighbors that we serve each and every day. So we're here and speak, and to speak in favor of the budget resolution. We first want to thank Councilman Festerson for, for bringing forth this, this amendment and thank him and have gratitude for bringing forth this and his support in working to address food insecurity across Omaha. So as the Councilman said, food insecurity has been climbing year after year with current rates at historic levels. From the latest data that's been released from, report released from Feeding America called Map the Meal Gap, Douglas County alone has seen a 49.5% increase in that food insecurity rate from 2023 to 2025, with our current food insecurity rate sitting at approximately 14.5%. So our neighbors in Omaha continue to feel the effects of years of high inflation and food costs that continue to remain high. So in turn, this has placed a really high and increased burden on the Food Bank and our network partners in order to meet the higher need for food assistance. In fiscal year '25 alone, Food Bank for the Heartland, along with our network partners across the region, we served approximately 904,567 duplicated individuals, which translated into 293,000 households, which is duplicated as well. So this high demand is not expected to, to dissipate as we continue to move forward into this upcoming fiscal year. In addition to this increased demand, we at the Food Bank have seen a reduction in the available resources, most keenly felt on the side of the USDA through the federal commodities for this upcoming fiscal year, so fiscal year '26. We are projecting a loss of approximately 2.6 million pounds of food in comparison to fiscal year '24. And this is due to previous federal funding cuts, sort of continued uncertainty that remains and further anticipated rollbacks in federal support. Furthermore, the cuts that were passed this, over the summer regarding public benefit programs with SNAP and Medicaid in the budget reconciliation package will only exacerbate our growing, this growing problem. These changes will have a ripple effect on our community and with the extent of their impact, still not really known in years down the road. So it's all these factors combined that make this budget allocation, this budget resolution really a monumental first sort of step to working towards meeting this high need in this really altered landscape that we are all working in, in order to, to meet the need within the emergency food system. They will greatly hit the Food Bank and its mission to provide high-quality nutritious foods for...
Your three minutes is up. Thank you so much for being here and for the work you do. Thank you. Good job. Is there any other proponents here? Alicia, good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Alicia Christensen, Director of Policy and Advocacy at Together, 812 South 24th Street. Together is committed to ensuring that everyone has access to healthy food and safe, affordable housing. Our nourish program operates a choice pantry where participants can select food that fits their family's dietary needs and preferences during regular business hours five days a week. In recent years, as Tim and Councilmember Festerson has mentioned, there's been an increase of need in the community. So for us, that's looked like an average of 155 visitors per day in 2023, which increased to an average of 170 visitors per day in 2024. And so far this year, we have averaged 203 visitors per day at our pantry. And so as we anticipate additional challenges as a result of the historic underinvestment in basic needs programs at the federal level, we greatly appreciate the city's foresight in strengthening Omaha's food support system. Together, which maybe some of you know was formed in the wake of the 1975 tornado that devastated the city, we're celebrating our 50th anniversary this year. And this funding will help us increase capacity to meet the growing need and we appreciate the city's support and partnership as we continue our commitment to serving Omaha into the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Good afternoon.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lenley Corbett Coontz with Saving Grace Perishable Food Rescue. Our business address is 4611 South 96th Street, Suite 154. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution and thanks to Councilman Festerson for his inclusion of us in this. We are a nonprofit organization operating in the Omaha metro area. Our mission is about rescuing excess perishable and prepared food that already exists from food sources such as grocery stores, caterers, event centers, and hospitals. And then we deliver that food same day to a network of almost 50 nonprofit organizations who are serving community members in need. We utilize a fleet of refrigerated vehicles to do this and operate five days a week. The food that we rescue is highly nutritious and consumable that unfortunately would likely just be thrown away. Nationally, over 30% of food produced goes unsold or uneaten, so we have excess food in hungry people and we're working to connect those. We operate with a just-in-time model, meaning the items that are approaching a best-buy, sell-buy, or use-by date are being moved off shelves but still need a good home. Our trucks and drivers match those, that excess food with organizations that are serving members of our community. We don't warehouse any of the food, meaning the partners receive it as fresh as we do. And through July of this year, 65% of the food that we've rescued of our 850,000 pound goal is produce and dairy, which are two very highly requested items. We believe that the best use of food is to feed people. Keeping food out of landfills also helps to contribute to a healthier climate. Food in landfills, as it decomposes, releases methane gas, which is a terrible contributor to air pollution. We know that in speaking with our nonprofit organizations, our partner organizations that include places such as homeless shelters, pantries, senior centers, transitional living, that their numbers are increasing and that more feed, more food is needed. As you've heard, they're seeing new populations and people who haven't needed assistance before. In addition to those that we already partner with, we do have a waitlist of nonprofits that are seeking our assistance, which just continues to demonstrate that the need is increasing, not decreasing. As an organization, we'll celebrate 12 years in existence next month and before the end of the year, we will reach 10 million pounds of food rescued and redistributed, food that will, has become millions of meals, delivering hope in our community, helping to address food insecurity and hunger and knowing that that food might have otherwise been thrown away. We appreciate that these funds could be invested, to be used for the delivery. We do that free of charge to our partner organizations and so investing these dollars into that will help our trucks remain in motion, that mission alive in our community, and help us to create a community where all members are nourished. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today?
Good afternoon to all of you. We're so honored to be here today, along with our partners. My name is Dominique Ron. I'm the CEO of The Heart Ministry Center located at 2222 Benny Street, the heart of North Omaha. Our mission is to provide food, healthcare, and a way forward to people severely affected by poverty in the Omaha area. We are here today to express our strong support for the proposed amendment in the 2026 city budget to appropriate an additional 150,000 for food distribution services in Omaha. The demand for food assistance in our community continues to rise and without added resources, too many of our neighbors will struggle to meet their basic needs. The Heart Ministry Center operates the largest pantry in Nebraska and our work highlights the scale of the food scarcity challenge. In 2025 alone, we project to distribute more than 3.17 million pounds of food. Over 160,000 community members will open our doors. These numbers reflect both the incredible reach of the center and the reality faced by families across Nebraska who are experiencing food insecurity. Increased city support for food pantries across Omaha will ensure organization like ours can continue to meet this ever-growing demand. Every dollar invested goes toward feeding children, families, seniors, and individuals otherwise may not know their next, know where their next meal is coming from. Food security is critical for health, stability, and opportunity. By funding this amendment, the City Council will demonstrate a commitment to ensuring Omaha residents can have access to nutritious food. Thank you for your leadership and consideration of this important investment in the well-being of our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today?
How's it going? My name's Nick Kohler, 4806 Dodge Street. I'm also the Policy and Funding Analyst for Apex Family Care, Social Services and Foster Care Agency. Thank you, Councilmember Festerson, for bringing this to the forefront. You know, where the federal government has failed and put unnecessary burden on local and state governments and organizations to pick up the finances, it's the most vulnerable individuals who are the most impacted. SNAP as itself is a crutch, not a catch-all for the individuals, regardless of what individuals may think. I would know this firsthand, as my mother, who was a teenager, and I relied on SNAP to get by as, as a child. Working in social services and in foster care, whether it be at Apex or during my time at Meals on Wheels, I've seen firsthand just how much a little assistance can do and can go a long way. A hungry child cannot learn or focus as they're consistently wondering where their next meal will be and whether or not they're going to have a meal or dinner in their belly that night. You all have the opportunity to make a direct impact here in your community and for the individuals you see every single day and I want to remind you all of that. Thank you so much, Councilman Member Festerson, the rest of the City Council, and I greatly encourage you all of you to vote yes for this amendment. Thank you.
Any other proponents here today?
Good afternoon, City Council members. My name is Clarice Dombeck. I live at 901 Farnum Street and I am here today representing no one but myself. So for the last five years, I've been the lead organizer for a community garden on 24th and Pratt called Healing Roots African Diaspora Garden. In those five years, we have provided free and fresh produce to all of our neighbors. Not only free and fresh produce, free, fresh, and culturally relevant produce to all of our neighbors. And for the first time this year, we joined in with Free Farm Syndicate, which is a grassroots-led organization that also provides free and fresh produce to communities across North and South Omaha. And since June, and may I add, that is an entirely volunteer-based organization. And then since June, at our stand on 24th and Pratt, we have seen, we have served 70 individuals every Sunday. We have provided free, fresh, and culturally relevant produce to 70 individuals every Sunday. That is almost 900 people so far this season. And the majority of those individuals are walking to the farm stand because they don't have access to a vehicle. They are coming from Evans Tower, excuse me, they're coming from Evans Tower where it's primarily elders and community members with disabilities. They are intergenerational families in our neighborhood where the grandmother is taking care of multiple grandkids. They are single mothers or people who have recently come into hard times that are looking to make ends meet in a time where our federal, state, and local government is not meeting the need. I really do appreciate you, Councilmember Pete Festerson, bringing this amendment and I think it's a good step in the right direction, but what everyone said before me, it's not enough. People need more and without more, folks are going to continue to go hungry. Thank you.
Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any, are you guys proponents?
I just wanted to get back to my...
Are there any opponents here? Seeing that public hearing is closed, Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought Amy. Ladies first.
Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Well, thank you.
It was, she was up first.
Well, and I, I actually wanted to make, just make a...
Well, and I, I actually wanted to make, just make a few clarifications. Mr. Festerson didn't just make this money magically appear. What happened was, a couple weeks ago, the city council appeared, approved a contract to provide the Keno basically services to the city of Carney. So, actually, who you all should be thanking would be the Keno players in Carney. The Keno loser players in Carney, right? So, they're the ones, it's, that's the reason that we did not have this anticipated revenue in the original drafted budget was because the mayor, this wasn't passed. And so, what, the reason this 150,000 actually exists is because this council passed that contract with the city of Carney a few weeks ago. And the finance committee, we just got the estimated 150,000 in our last meeting. So, normally, this money then, the increase, it would be the mayor that would then allocate this through the mayor's community service grants. Mr. Festerson took it upon himself to decide who he wanted it to go to, and I think the council looked at it, and we all said, you know what? Food banks are really good, so I think we support that. I just wanted to let everyone know, all seven of us couldn't have said, I have 150,000, and now I get to pick my nonprofits where it's going to go. So, I wanted to kind of make that, that clarification of how we got that money. And then, also, Keno money, a lot of people are unaware, Keno money can only be used for community service projects. We cannot take Keno money and put it into public works to fix our roads. We cannot put it into anything that the city needs. Like, we can't give it to the Parks Department for maintenance. It's Nebraska statute requires that Keno money be allocated just to community service programs. And so, happy, we're happy to do that, and we're glad that the food banks will be able to make good use of, of these additional Keno funds that we're getting from our sister city, Carney. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, good one, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add a little clarity to Councilmember Melton's words. One, I do thank Councilmember Festerson for the foresight. When we heard the public hearing, and many people talked about the food insecurity, the cuts to SNAP, you know, his response, I don't know who all he reached out to, but it was, you know, we knew we did have the 150,000 that was, had not been designated from Keno as of yet, and said, hey, what about looking, how to distribute this to, you know, help with food insecurity in Omaha in response to our public hearing? I've worked at a food pantry prior to my current gigs for six years, and so, I did give a little perspective, actually, as to what would be the highest impact, knowing that there's 168 food pantries that the food of the heartland serves. And so, what you hear, see here is a little bit of strategy. One, you have Together, that's midtown, almost South Omaha, that you have Hart Ministry Center, that's North Omaha, and then, you've got Food Bank of the Heartland and Saving Grace that serve all pantries or those that they're in partnership with. And so, really, there was some thought to, how do we respond to public hearing and let people know that you can't move a ton of money within one budget, public hearing in that way, but how can we show constituents that we're listening to them and that this council does play a role in, in supporting our most vulnerable population? So, just wanted to add a little more context to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, normally, I would be hesitant to increasing revenues and just picking a number in increasing revenues, but, and especially with the new venture, but knowing the operator being Big Red Keno and the fact that Carney already had a Keno operation, it's just that Big Red is now taking over the management and operation of that, knowing that there is a track record of the revenues that that would produce. So, I'm comfortable with, with the amount that Councilmember Festerson has put forward to, to address this need. So, I'll be supportive of that. One of the questions I was originally going to ask, and I hope, I just want to put it out there, but I don't want to start a food fight in the sense that if there isn't enough money in there, how do you allocate? If everyone's getting $75,000, I just, I know that food fight will not occur, but I know that this is a conservative estimate as to what the revenues will be produced from the operations in Carney. And again, thanks to our, our fellow Nebraskans in Carney for helping us out in Omaha. So, as I said, normally, I wouldn't be supportive of an increase in revenues with a new venture, but this is not, I don't think you can consider this a new venture because it was an existing operation that is now being operated by Big Red Keno. So, I will support it in that regard.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. My comments are, Mr. Harding, when he brought this to us a couple weeks ago, in order for us to get this, this revenue, I commend Councilmember Festerson for his leadership. We certainly recognize the hunger in our community, and we are doing all we can with these funds to help that, and it's going to be a growing need, and I thank everybody that was here today and the work he's doing in our community to combat hunger and help people. Thank you. No further lights. Ro call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yeah.
Melton.
Yeah.
Ro.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 13, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to increase the general fund and community service programs by $35,000 for the Omaha Parks Foundation and $15,000 for the Omaha Municipal Land Bank.
Public hearing is now open on item number 13. Councilmember Harding, proponent, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Here's the broken record again. This is for the Parks Project. Ideally, it's, we have not identified the specific park yet, but it will be in District 6 to address some of the maintenance issues in that area. That's for $35,000. I was also then approached, before this went to our agenda, about a gap for the land bank that I think needed to be filled. The 2026 proposed funding level was $15,000 less than it was in 2025, and the land bank is doing incredible work for our community into getting properties that are sitting fallow, if you will, and getting them to be productive and tax-paying in the sense of property taxes and contributing in that regard to the, to the city. So, to fill that gap of $15,000, I chose to take that from the $50,000 I had to put in toward the land bank. So, with that, I will ask for, I'll make the motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any other proponents on item number 13? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. No further lights. Ro call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yeah.
Ro.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to revise the 2026-2031 capital improvement program funding for the North 24th Streetscape Improvement Project.
Public hearing is now open on item number 14. Proponents, Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
So, thank you, Mr. President. This item is near and dear to my heart, the North 24th Street Streetscape Master Plan. In its totality, what it looks to do is to improve pedestrian safety, walkability, multimodal transportation options within the North 24th Street corridor, improve traffic signaling, as well as bring multimodal amenities to that corridor. And this amendment is basically because prior to my running for council, I'd raised $13 million for the Streetscape plan, and we were seeing some of it programmed within the CIP, but we were not seeing the HUD proportion programmed, which those dollars expire in 2030. And so, I appreciate the council staff, public works, and planning, working with us just to get all of those dollars programmed. And so, we'll, we should be seeing groundbreaking within this project in 2026, and so, I'm excited to essentially support this amendment.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here?
Hi, yes, sir. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Queston Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. One of the things on this North 24th, now, we, I talked to Mr. Ro, and we lost the money out, or not lost, the bid for 122 million for the First National Plaza. So, now, we're looking at, with a mutual Omaha building, would that be a part of it? Because there's some developers who want to buy that whole process for embassy and consulate. So, could we add that, another person to negotiate with that, so First National Security thinks up on these projects?
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Item number 14. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
I think it's on the next.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I'm just looking at the buttons here. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm pleased to support this amendment today. Thank you to Councilmember Goodwin for bringing it. It's a great project. I'm pleased to see her bring her enthusiasm for the renovation of North 24th Street. Now, as a city council member, previously as a BID member, to help get this done, it'll be a game changer for that community and for our entire community. And with this amendment, I have found in my work in this area in business district renovations, it's really important to have it expressed correctly in city documentation and in the city capital improvement plan in this case. As we're going about the phasing of a project and as we're going about raising additional money for a project, whether that be federal money or philanthropic money, so this is a good way to go about doing that. It's currently expressed as other local in 2007 or eight and nine, which sometimes means we don't exactly know what it's going to be, but also provides flexibility to what that's going to be. And from my perspective, whether it's philanthropic or not, this is something the city should do and should figure out as a match to the federal funds that otherwise would be wasted. So, I'm happy to support this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Yes, and again, and this is for those watching, I also like to clarify, I love the project, Ms. Goodwin, and I won't repeat everything that you just said. I think it's fabulous. And actually, what is even more fabulous is, this isn't money that's coming out of our general fund or bonds, this is money that's actually being raised, and that has already been raised. And so, now, we're just reflecting the correct numbers based upon the money that's being raised so that it's reflected properly in our CIP. We are not allocating any of your tax dollars to this project. We're simply reflecting the money that Ms. Goodwin and others have raised for this project, and that we have some matching dollars in some federal funds. And so, this is just a more accurate reflection of what needs to be done and in each year. And so, I appreciate the clarification, but I always like to let people know that because I'll get, this is, it's even more fabulous when you're raising the money to do these things that benefit various areas of our city, and I think that's really important, and I thank you for all the work that you have done on that. And I look forward to seeing the project as it phases complete over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Ro call. Oh, do we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sorry. Motion and a second. Ro call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yeah.
Ro.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2026 budget to remove the terms diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Now, I'll open the public hearing on item number 15. Proponents, Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason for this, and it, as it says, it's for no financial impact on the budget, but it has the potential to affect the funds that come to the city of Omaha through the federal government. So, there was an executive order from the White House that was in jeopardy if you have DEI or DEI programs within your organization, in this case, a city, that you could lose federal funding for your projects. The amount of money that we receive from the federal government is millions upon millions of dollars that goes toward things like affordable housing, community development block grants, public works in our roads, parks, and the upkeep of those. And in order to make sure that we are not putting the city of Omaha in jeopardy of losing those federal funds and delivering to the citizens of Omaha, the services, the public services that we provide and the level of services that we provide, I thought that this was a necessary and prudent action to take to move forward for this.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, well, I was in a conversation earlier today where I talked about words, and I think in this case, it could be interpreted as if we no longer care about equity. We no longer consider the gaps that we know exist in this nation as it pertains to minorities, women, other underrepresented or marginalized communities. I recognize where we are at, at a local, state, and federal level, but am disheartened that in 2025, we're here. In 2025, we're here when, in 1973, I was the first generation to be born with my civil rights in the United States of America. And sometimes, I talk to my father-in-law, Dan Goodwin Senior, who fought on the front lines of civil rights in the city, and honestly, he says, I thought we would be further. You know, he actually went to the March on Washington for jobs and freedom because it wasn't simply about social expression, it was about the right to literally sit where I'm sitting today. And so, whereas I understand the purpose, the political correctness of this moment, I'm disheartened. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Melton, you're recognized as a proponent. The order got mixed up, so I wanted to recognize you as a co-sponsor with Councilmember Harding, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. And, and I just want to say exactly what it says. I don't want to put the millions of dollars that this city receives for projects such as the project just before. There was $3 million that we're receiving in HUD grants for the 24th Street Landscape Project. It's a federal fund. I don't want to see, I don't want to see 24th Street BID lose that funding. Safer Grants for the Fire Department, 18, we have, currently, we have 18 firefighters being funded by the Safer Grants. That's provided by FEMA, federal funds, 18 firefighters. And we've applied for another Safer Grant for another 18 firefighters, which is extremely important for our city. But probably most important, and what you hear from everybody, is roads, roads, roads. We have to fix our roads. We pay for all of our major road projects. 80 to 90% of the funding comes from the federal government. We can't fund our road projects without the federal funds. In addition, we have CDBG funds, affordable housing funds. All of those funds come from the federal government. And at, it's almost every night, when I turn on the news, I hear of somebody losing federal funding based upon this directive that we've received from Washington, D.C. Universities are losing their, their funding for a lot of their research grants in healthcare. I don't want the city of Omaha to be on that list. I don't want to turn on the news and see that the city of Omaha is going to lose all of their federal funding.
I don't have an estimate on the top of my head, but obviously, the Omaha metro area gets an allocation from the federal government on an annual basis. And I'll give you an example of a project that probably would not get done if it wasn't for the fact that we got federal funds. And if you drive 168th Street from Q Street all the way north to Pacific Street, you will recognize that that was probably close to 50 to 60 million dollars of federal funding that was utilized for that particular project. So federal funding coming to the Omaha metro area is just not for city limits. It's for Douglas County, Sarpy County, and some of the other jurisdictions within the Omaha metro area. So it's a very, very important source of funding for us.
So just that one project was 50 to 60 million. If we were to lose federal funding for infrastructure projects, we would go over 100 million easily. Is that, I'm assuming, is that correct?
Correct. And again, there's a formula that's used that gives a direct allocation to the Omaha metro area. And so you have multiple jurisdictions that are competing for those funds. And so again, it's, city of Omaha having projects that are identified is very important in order to be able to keep the transportation network functioning properly and allow for us to be able to maintain a city that provides for not only commuters, but also the commerce that exists.
Thank you. And so I, that's the reason I don't want to see Omaha lose the funds that we are receiving from the federal government. I think it would be devastating for our infrastructure, it'd be devastating for affordable housing, it'd be devastating for low-income people that are counting on it, and it would be devastating for every taxpayer. Because those are our, those federal funds are, it's our money, too. We're the ones funding the federal government. So then our money that we're sending to D.C. is going to go to other cities and not to us. And I don't want to see that happen either. So that's the reason we're doing this. Removing those words on two pages in our budget in order to save us hundreds of millions of dollars of federal funding doesn't mean that we're changing our policies. No one's, we're not asking to eliminate any positions. We're not asking our HR department to do anything differently. In fact, I think our hiring processes are fabulous. I think the diversity, and especially going after diversity, in our police, in our fire, in our recruitment, none of that's going to change. We're simply removing these words from the budget. So that's, that's why I co-sponsored this with Mr. Harding. It's to save us, save us those, from losing those federal dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Yeah, I think one other point, and then one other comment, I guess. I guess the point I was going to make was actually earlier on our, on our agenda. Item number 12. That was to help fund some of the shortfalls that the, some of the nonprofits related to food have seen happen. So the, I wouldn't even call it a threat, but the reality that federal funds are being cut or withheld in certain cases, and that's one of the reasons why I think we heard the food-related 501(c)(3)'s here talking about those cuts is exactly what we're talking about, hoping that we don't see happen at the city level from those federal funds. Then the one point, other point I was going to bring up, at least at this point, is that, and Councilmember Melton kind of hit on that. When I originally approached the mayor's office about this, I was very specific to say, this is not targeted at any one person or any individual. It was exactly what it was. It was the elimination for that reference. And I must say, and I actually even said it to the person who had that in his title, what I find kind of a little upsetting, at least to me, is that today, the mayor's office put out a statement that really made it about that one individual. And I think that's unfair to me because I was very specific in my comments and reason to bring this forward, again, was not targeted to any one individual. Because I know that individual who had that in his title also had a myriad of other responsibilities that he did and provided for the citizens of Omaha. So I did take offense to that attack to say that, or to at least give the implication that I was doing that or targeting someone for that. So I will publicly say that again to all of you, since I did to the mayor earlier and to that individual, that that was never the intention of this. That person does his job for the city of Omaha and does a hell of a job doing it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on item number 15 here today? Do you want to be proponent? All right, okay. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized. I'm sorry.
No, that's, no problem. I only wanted to reemphasize a few things. One, that I absolutely care about federal funding coming to the city. However, I would be remiss if I did not express my concern and the concern of many of the constituents in my district, that this appears to be an attack on diversity, not necessarily from this council, but at a higher level, and that we're at a critical moment, that it isn't just words, and it will start being policy. And so I cannot simply not say that because my origins tell me differently. So just to be clear, I understand what's at stake, but I also understand the dog whistle from a higher level. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Are there any, any other proponents?
You're getting way ahead of yourself, Mr. Bagley.
Proponents? Donnie, are you a proponent?
Yes, sir.
Kane.
You've been going with the council first and the citizens later. But okay, anyway. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson de Cuestion Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. You know, I read these books, and Thomas Edison and, that other fellow, Thomas Edison and Alexander Graham Bell refused to accept any money from the federal government. And I'm trying to figure out why, because Senator Chambers didn't want any gold coming from South Africa. But if we bring this money to 200,000, 200 million to purchase mutual Omaha outside money, are we going to get in trouble like Mr. Futterberg? Because if First National turned down 122 million. So in the meantime, Mr. President, you must be doing a wonderful job because your name is coming up quite a bit today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on item number 15?
Hi, my name is Alexander Lu. I'm just speaking for me. I'm not going to tell you guys.
Can you, can you give us your address, too, please?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And push those microphones a little closer. Thanks.
Is that better?
So people, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, please.
Yeah, so I actually, so I'm 9505 South 27th Street. I actually live in Bellevue, so like, technically, I'm just here observing. But as somebody who obviously, as far as diversity goes, this affects, I will say that I'm not going to tell you guys what you should do or not do as far as taking these things out of the budget, but I will say that you guys should be a bit, play a bit smarter. I mean, come on, you can just change the wording. You can do things to get around this. I mean, EOs are also not, they're not law. That's not how they work. This is obviously an attack on people like me, people like you, City Council Goodwin. Like, this is very clearly what they're trying to do. This is also McCarthyism, right out of the book. This is not the first time this has happened in our, the history of our country. And this is probably not going to be the last time it's going to happen either, unfortunately. But, I mean, you guys can quite literally just change the terms you use and still actively include minority populations within the wording of, you know, your budgets and everything else. Like, it's quite easy to still include us and not violate whatever nonsense they're doing up on, you know, in D.C. Like, it's not difficult to do that. But you guys say, does it, it's not like, oh, we're not attacking anybody or not trying to exclude anybody, but there's already reports that, you know, women are being very clearly cut out of jobs and excluded from things. Like, it's, there's already ripple effects to different marginalized minority groups. Like, as a trans person, very clearly is affecting, you know, my community. So just saying, it's like, you guys don't think it's affecting people, but it obviously already is, and it's going to get worse from here, so.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here today?
Hello, my name is Lynn Mills. I live at 3509 California Street. Councilman Bagley, I live in District 3. I wasn't going to speak today, but Councilman Goodwin, you spoke eloquently, and I agree 100%. This is just the beginning of chipping away at rights. On little things that you think are not important right now are becoming important, sir, Councilman Harding. This is the worst step that we could take for this city right now. We are, yes, we are facing a country that is facing diversity in ways that we haven't experienced in a long time. We do not need to be a city that follows suit with the President of the United States that says that we should not have DEI. Why is he saying this? We could go on and on about why. It's simple. It's straightforward. It's not right. It causes diversity, it calls, causes diversity, it causes people to lose jobs, to lose positions that they are actually qualified for, sir. This is about keeping Omaha, Omaha-friendly, Omaha-inclusion. We need DEI in the budget for 2026. It's simple. It's just words. And I don't care how many times we have to hear about roads, roads, roads. I'd rather have DEI in the 2026 budget than, than talking about the importance of fixing roads. Omaha is known for its problems with the roads. DEI is not, roads are not enough to say that DEI should be taken out, simply because it's just words. It is the beginning of something worse. And I want to thank you for your time. I really want you to consider this. This is not right. It's not right for our city. It's not right for our people, sir. And I appreciate your time listening to me.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on item number 15? Any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents to item number 15?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. This is not the first time I've talked on this topic. I'm against it. Number one, it's against the Constitution. We have an equality clause. Anything other than that is not equality, okay? Constitutional. DEI is illegal. There is an executive order that declares it illegal. Also, I'm tired of hearing you guys crybaby about the state does this or does that, and you want all the money from the state and you want all the money from the federal government. How many times have you heard the term clawback from people like me? Not just me, but four or five other people that no longer want to come down here because you don't listen. Federal government never gave you the constitutional right to overspend. They said, yeah, the federal has certain powers and the states have certain powers. The state maybe dictates to you and tells you, you got to use ARPA money. You don't have to take it. It started with ARPA, but now you're crybabing about the federal grants and the federal money that came out of my pocket? Because you guys don't want to stop spending on special programs, a lot of them aren't working. Don't come to me and say, I'm racist. That is DEI. DEI should be wiped out of all your documents and all your proclamations because it's not equality. It is inequality pro bono. And we're tired of it. The citizens are tired of it. We're also tired of you declaring us a democracy when you swore to defend a republic. We are a republic, not a democracy. That's part of DEI. That's part of Marxism. So stop crying, stop spending, and stop giving it out to people who wants anything for everything. And stop kicking me out.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents here today to item number 15?
Louisiana 2709 Dewey Avenue. To be clear, by opposing the resolution, we want to keep DI in, in the budget, right? That that's, okay. So, yeah. I'm here to oppose, to strike the words diversity, equity, and inclusion for, from the city of Omaha's 26 yearly budget. I would give this to the clerk, this book, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for Dummies, but it's my only copy. The, Mr. Harding and Councilwoman Melton, I think this is a good book to look at. I do have prepared comments, but let me read from this. Diversity, equity, and inclusion have taken a front seat for organizations seeking to capitalize on new talent, more women, greater ethnicity, five generations, and different abilities, backgrounds, experiences, thinking styles, beliefs, and ways of working, and build world-class cultures. They recognize that in order to attract, engage, and remain top talent, retain top talent, and new customers, clients, and members, they must have strong leaders who can work effectively across differences. And they must foster a work environment where all talent enjoys a sense of belonging and inclusion and has an equal opportunity for succeeding, for success. And I remember when the Douglas County passed their DEI program, which the county employees could opt into, and leaders in, in the county participated, like County Treasurer John Ewing, who's now our mayor, and Kent Holmes. And they expressed their approval and the usefulness when the County Board of Commissioners received their annual report on the DEI program. This resolution implies that our city must erase these words in order to protect federal funding, but there's no evidence that Omaha's grants are in danger simply because our budget acknowledges diversity, equity, and inclusion. In fact, by actually having this resolution, you might have drawn attention to this. And this smacks of Trumpism. We have a black Democratic mayor, and so President Trump is going to find whatever reason he can, if he really wants to go after Omaha. So I encourage you to not strike these words because it's, it's nonsensical. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents, item number 15?
Hello, I'm Melissa Palando, 4016 Walnut Street, and this is Autumn. If you hear her snoring, I'm sorry. Okay, so I think a little, people were confused in regards to opposing or proposing. So I am in opposition that the words DEI, diverse, diversity, equity, and inclusion be removed from the budget. Harding has proposed a few resolutions that align with the federal, the federal government. I don't believe that you were voted in the federal, you know what I mean? You're not the president, so like, your constituents are the people of Omaha. Diversity, equity, inclusion. I personally received a diversity scholarship from the Board of Realtors. These types of initiatives do a lot of good for people. If it wasn't for that scholarship, I would not be an agent, would not be able to provide for my children, would not be feel empowered to come up here and speak. So with that being said, I don't believe that we should align ourselves with the federal government because your constituents are not asking for that. I don't believe anyone proposed this to you. I do think you brought this upon yourself because you do have your own personal political beliefs. I do not think that removing DI, DEI is going to protect us in any other way. I think the city can do a lot more for their us in any other way. I think the city can do a lot more for their constituents in in certain cities, I mean, certain areas of town, but not even that. There's Hispanic and black people all over Omaha, not just in North Omaha, in South Omaha. They're they're not represented as much as they should be. There's other policies that can be changed to reallocate a lot of funds. You know, our school districts are very segregated, things of that nature. But what I want to acknowledge is that removing DEI, what it does, it panders to classism because there's a lot of poor white people. And there's a lot of poor white people, they feel like their entry-level opportunities are taken away from them because of DEI. And and that needs to be addressed. Like, the classism issues need to be addressed in Omaha because when you start to pit people of color against poor people, like, people of color aren't poor, right? They have lack of access. So we want more access. We want our children to have more access to opportunities. And we don't want to fight for access along with peers that are not necessarily at our same level, if you get what I'm saying. Like, I'm a person of color, but that doesn't mean I I'm in poverty based on like circumstances, not because of like choices, but people, white people who are in poverty, they have more access to opportunities. So I want my children to have the same access, if not more access, based on their character, not their economic situation. So removing DEI, it starts to snowball if you do it.
Ma'am, your three, your three minutes is up. Thank you for coming today. Thank you. Are there any other opponents here today on item number fifteen?
Hello, my name is Gwen Easter. I'm with St. Haven Community Center. I'm also a resident at twenty-eight ninety-five Benny Street in North Omaha. And I wasn't coming to speak on this particular matter and just got my time crossed, but I was sitting back there and I was thinking about, I believe it was last year, when the university had students come up for DEI and they were removing that from the university. It was about a hundred and fifty people there, diverse, and, you know, young, older, you know, and they were talking about how DEI helped them, you know, all nationalities. You know, for me, I I think this is not about, you know, people's homosexuality or or any of those things. It's just about fairness, you know, and like the young lady said, there are families and or low-income families that are not just black, you know, across Nebraska that are struggling. And to me, you know, being the fact that I have seen a lot of racism, I have seen on the side of Republicans and Democrats that are, that some are not so good with supporting families or pretending to want to help, you know, families, but they they have their own agendas. I don't want to see this removed because I think it'll help all people. And that's what it needs to be, the focus really needs to be on, is about people, period. No matter what it is, if they're struggling to get jobs, housing, whatever it is, you know, we need to be looking at at fat. I also want to say lastly, that I would like to have, because of the Commissioner of African-American Affairs, who I'm no longer a commissioner due to some issues that have gone on, discrimination, people working against myself, Terry Crawford, and others. This is a board, a commission that could do the work to help families in all areas, education, housing, economic development. And I have seen certain powers work against this commission. I want LB sixty-nine to be overturned, and I'm asking the entire community, especially black people, to stand and have that commission overturned because these are areas and things that we can work on. Education, the judicial system, all things that affect us. And even in this matter, you know, this just happened to be a part, but, you know, it's not all black people that's on.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up. Thank you for coming down today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents on item number fifteen here today?
I'm Carter Reichenberg. I'm from thirty-four seven South Fifty-second Avenue. And I didn't know that this was being brought up today. This is my first time being here. And I, frankly, I guess I'm disappointed that this extends to the people that represent me at my own level, that to me, just looking at history that I've learned through my high school classes, through college, political classes that I've taken, my own research, et cetera, this is how things like this start, is that it's always words, and then it's actions, and then these actions become law. It's not just references or things we should do, that we should bend the knee and do things like this because this ultimately will result in us regressing all of these years of all of this change that has been made, that I wasn't around to see the blood and the sweat and the tears that were put into that to make that happen, but I'm going to be around to see it regress and go backwards. And I would be remiss if I was just going to let that happen and not have my voice be heard at a place where I feel like I could make some change. And I think that this should not go through and that either way, they're going to take away our funding when we make a misstep somewhere later along the line anyway, in my personal opinion, because this in and of itself is ridiculous. So it's just going to make up other ridiculous things to get rid of all of the blue cities and all of the blue states' ability to receive funding until they change their laws and they change all of their ideologies completely to fit Donald Trump's view, who does not represent this city. You guys represent this city. And I think that this is not okay, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents on item fifteen?
Michael Duffy, ten eleven South Thirty-Fifth Street. I'm strongly opposed to this resolution. I really enjoyed listening to Councilwoman Goodwin, and I thought you made some very important points. What are we communicating to members of marginalized communities in this city when we say things like, "Our road funding is more important than acknowledging your humanity" in our city documents? It's shameful. And you can say, "We're not changing our policies. It's just words," but language constructs reality. And it's just toadying for a fascist, and it's shameful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents here on item fifteen?
Hello, my name's Katie Wingate, three thirty-eight North Thirty-Fifth Avenue. I'm in President Begley's district. I am here in opposition of the revision of this budget. I believe that the policing of language, specifically these three words in this specific order, is absolutely nefarious. I think that this revision would be a symbolic alignment with an oppressive state. Our city will still be at risk of losing its federal funding regardless of this revision. I think anyone with an ear to the ground is aware of that. I'd also like to speak to the moral injury of having to make these sorts of decisions. I urge you to represent your constituents in what we've heard today, that this is a slippery slope and a very scary loss, I will say. Additionally, I do have a question for Councilmember Harding. I'm wondering how much time was spent writing this particular resolution and if any of that time could perhaps have been spent reviewing the parks in your district to determine which ones needed the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents on item number fifteen here today? Opponents?
Hello, my name is Jonathan Renteria, forty-three thirty-four South Twenty-Sixth Street. I think it is inappropriate for Councilmember Harding to engage in what is basically campaigning for a federal campaign. I know, he can shake his head. John Ewing, unless he's already stated that he's going to support this amendment, would theoretically not sign it. So I don't understand why he would engage in this kind of, what you're saying is aversion of a smear and saying that you did things to negatively impact a person or their reputation, whatever it was that you said at the beginning. So I think Brett Lindstrom, right now, would be kicking himself. I think he wishes that he could be the person to introduce this resolution, this amendment, because it is silly. They're just words. Like, Councilmember Melton said, "If you're going to be in effect doing the same thing moving forward, why do you need to change the words now?" Like, why can't it be where if there is a fight, go to court? Like, you don't need to lay down your arms or your power as a body right now. Like, take it to court and fight it out. That's what everyone else is doing. So unless you're already agreeing with what's going to be coming down the line, why are you laying down your, like, your tools already? Like, if there are funds that are promised, like, go to the district court, whatever, the circuit court, whatever it takes to get that money and keep it coming to the city or to the, whatever the projects are. And if we need to subsidize or take out bonds to, like, finish it out, we can figure that out because we have rich people here. There's philanthropic dollars that are going to be matched for all these projects that are over the five, ten, however many years. So all I'm saying is, I think it's inappropriate. I know what your intent is, and I know you're going to have the perspective you have to make things better in your mind, but listen to the people here. Like, they have been impacted by DEI already, and they want to be positively impacted moving forward. So just take that into consideration. And maybe you won't change your strategy, but at least change your your mindset with other people's perspectives coming to you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents on item number fifteen?
Hello, Dana Murray, again. Twenty-five ten North Twenty-Fourth Street. Yeah, it's a hard one. Should have probably left twenty minutes ago. I couldn't have said it any better than Councilmember Goodwin. That sums it up, so I don't have anything else to say on that. I would offer a suggestion. This was never Councilmember Harding ever going to hit coming from you. And you've supported me and Norma, so I like you. I don't feel there's any nefariousness. But now that we have some diversity amongst the council, we have some unity, I feel a much better spirit coming here now today. It provides us an opportunity. I mean, had you felt that way, and this was presented by Councilmember Goodwin, I think it would have hit way different. Like, it's never going to hit coming from you, right? And I'm proud to be from Omaha. I've lived in New York City a lot of my adult life. I've lived overseas. I'm proud to come back to Omaha and call this place home because it is special, right? It is unique. I think people call it the good life for a a reason. People are good here. There are good people here. And everybody's conservative here. I don't mean politically. Everybody's used to doing what they do, and they don't want a lot of hiccups in whatever they do. But we don't get punked out by politics either, right? That's, we don't do that. Because we could take out, and I could care less about, you know, any words in something, because whether the words are there or they aren't, it doesn't subtract the the pain anybody is going through, or those that are marginalized, or those that are leveraged against. So they're just words. But what I will say is, we could take that out, and the funding could still be taken away, just like in the nonprofit world, right? So I wouldn't trust that, right? But it makes sense why you would want to. But if you were going to present that, that was never gonna, was never going to hit coming from you, right? And I think we have opportunities with a mayor of color, with a council member that is extremely intelligent, smart, and capable, that those sort of things can be levied and brought to the table. And it may be more collectively digested. I don't know if any of that makes sense, but thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents here on item number fifteen?
Good afternoon.
Sir, you already spoke on this item, so you can't speak again.
On this item, in particular?
Yeah. On, did you speak on fifteen already?
No, I spoke on twelve.
Okay, I'm sorry, please.
It's no problem. It's okay.
Floor is yours. A lot of people here.
I understand. No problem.
Appreciate your understanding. Go ahead.
No, I appreciate it. My name is Nick Koller, forty-eight oh six Dodge Street. I want to be clear that I'm speaking on behalf of myself for this item. I wasn't going to speak, in all honesty, out of fear. Fear for retaliation from the federal government, fear from individuals in the community, fear from individuals just around, because this is the rhetoric that is now the unfortunate norm that goes on. People are scared to be themselves. People are scared to speak out and to speak on what they believe in, simply because of fear of the federal government and of Trump. And in all honesty, like I said, I wasn't going to speak, but what moved me to speak was the justification from Councilmember Harding and Councilmember Melton for why they brought this forward. These are the individuals that supported Trump in twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-four, and they are saying this is the directive from him, and they are worried about his reciprocation for what's going on. But these are the individuals, like I said, that supported him, as a lot of us did, knew full and farewell what he was about and what he was going to implement. So it frustrates me to no end that this is the justification for it. Councilmember Goodwin, I want to thank you again for your story. I really appreciate it. As I said, working in social services, understanding this firsthand, I know just how hard it is and I just how hard, you know, individuals won't understand what you what you go through. I'll never understand what you've gone through, but I appreciate you speaking up on behalf of it. And it just frustrates me incredibly that we're having this conversation, that this is the norm in twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your understanding. I appreciate it. Any other opponents here on item number fifteen?
Hello, my name is Dylan Drew. I live at one three four seven South Fifty-second Avenue. And I just want to say that I'm disappointed more than anything. Obviously, I wasn't alive to see how things used to be, but I don't want to see things regress back to how it is. I don't think it's going to stop with the words diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think that it is important that we, as a city, stand together and we take a stand against the federal government rather than just roll over and then see where things lead from here. We can take our future into our own hands rather than letting the federal government do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Hi, Ted Potter, two nine six three and a half Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one oh five. Seriously, don't do it. If they shut off the money and the roads go to hell, you get to blame him, and then you get to take a stand. And if you do, then you're not standing alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents, item number fifteen?
Good afternoon again, Clarice Steinbeck, nine oh one Farnham Street. Again, I'm here speaking for myself. And I am actually very tired, so I would just like to go on the record with saying that I'm an opponent and I agree with the majority of what the other folks said before me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any opponents remaining on item number fifteen? Public hearing is closed. We had a motion and a second. Roll call, no further lights.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
No.
Goodwin.
No.
Mister President.
No.
Motion failed, three to four. Item sixteen, a resolution to raise revenue estimates and revise the expenditures of the 2026 budget due to the areas annexed into the city on July thirtieth, 2025.
Council discussion on item number sixteen. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mister President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. That was sixteen. Item seventeen, a resolution to approve the 2026 budget, estimated by the mayor with revisions adopted by city council at this meeting.
Council discussion on item number seventeen. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. No lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Roe.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mister President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item eighteen, a resolution to approve the 2026, 2031 capital improvement program. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Council discussion on item number eighteen. Is there a motion? No lights. Roll call.
Just to clarify, this would be approved as amended. Improvement Program. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Council discussion on item number 18. Is there a motion?
Second.
No lights. Roll call.
Just to clarify, this would be approved as amended with item 18, which is Resolution 2025-0811. That was approved at this meeting.
As of, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Motion and a second. Roll call, sorry.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Item 40. Do we do a motion? We're moving item 40 up to this part of the agenda right now, so item 40. With no objections from my colleagues. Thank you.
Item 40, in ordinance to amend, Chapter 11, Article 2 of the Omaha Municipal Code, entitled Food Inspection and Protection. C is an amendment of the whole requested by Councilmember Melton. D is an amendment of the whole requested by Councilmembers Bagley and Festerson.
Council discussion. Councilmember Festerson, you are recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. And I want to start by thanking my colleagues for laying this item over a few times since our last public hearing. Whenever we have some discussions on different items, I think we've had a good tradition of making sure there's a full council to consider these changes and some of the amendments of the whole that are proposed today. And so I also want to thank the Douglas County Board of Health Department folks who are here today, and have been working on this issue and trying to address some of the things that came up in that original public hearing, I think, in good faith, to address some of those issues, to see if we can't get everyone supportive of them. And I think that is the nature of the amendment of the whole, number 40D, that has been proposed by myself and by Councilman Bagley, so I want to address that briefly. What Amendment of the Whole 40D will do is it does update the code for the first time in, I think, 20 years. It's a lengthy document, but that's mostly because it's striking out language that is obsolete and no longer even effective or relevant anymore. Secondly, it does adopt the no bare hands touching of food, but that is per state law anyway, so it's something we must do. And so that is included in this amendment of the whole. And then it does offer a tweak to a new section regarding the food handler section and food handler permits that have been proposed. It does still propose them and requires food handlers to take this basic training every two years, but it would exempt anyone under 18 from having to pay a fee, realizing that issue came up in our public hearing and was a point of sensitivity, and particularly one that I agree with, with young people trying to, say, get a summer job or participate in a first job potentially when they're young people. They still have to have the training and just not pay the fee. I think that's reasonable and addresses some of the concerns we've heard. So I do want to recognize Eric and Adam and others that have been working on this for a long period of time. I do think, and still think, they had an effective advisory board from folks from the industry and from the public when they crafted this before bringing it to us. And they still do have the endorsements, strong endorsements, it appears to me, of the Omaha Restaurant Association and the Hospitality Association and numerous other letters of support that we've received. The last thing I'll mention about it for now is that I did take them up on shadowing a food inspector who is here, Sarah. Attended a session with her where she visited a restaurant with a typical annual inspection. I was impressed by that interaction. It was very professional in nature on both sides. This was, without identifying who the restaurant was, it was a mainstream restaurant, a corporate restaurant, I would say, that is very well organized. But even so, we observed a lot of issues there that would be better handled by having a food handler permit, as this suggests. They ended up getting a pretty good rating, I will say, but definitely some situations that would just benefit from some basic training and basic reminders, which is what this section would do. So I think that's why also the food industry has been supportive and why I'll be supportive today. So having said that, I'm sure there'll be some additional conversation about these, but I wanted to move item 40D.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Festerson did D, so. Go ahead and do the roll call. I just clicked my button off.
Okay.
I still support not having greater regulation for small business in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
I too was supportive of C. I don't disagree with some of what is in D, but I think C was the correct answer. So in that regard, I will be, I will not vote for D, but will vote for C if D fails.
Thank you. And I, Sarah, I also wanted to say thanks to your team. I also did a shadow with you at a restaurant in my district, and the perspective and the professionalism and your expertise and your patience, when I observed you observing others, it really is, I know people in the community that like to frequent our wonderful restaurants. It's reassuring that you're not there with a little ruler like the nuns used to whack me in the head in grade school if I got out of line, or my friends, not me. But you are so professional, and it's, you reassure, if there's errors being made, you work with people to make the corrective measures on what they can do for food safety. So I really enjoyed you affording me the opportunity to go along and see the work that's done and how we try to keep our community and people frequenting our restaurants safe from any foodborne illnesses. So thank you for that. With no further lights on, we had a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding.
No.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
No.
Row.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, five to two. Item 19, to consider a Class D liquor license for Leo Ballroom located at 2027 Dodge Street, Suites F1 to F2.
When number are we on now, 19? Now you're good. I will open the public hearing on item number 19. Are there any proponents here today? Good afternoon.
Hello. My name is Brooke Hudson, and I live at 302 Hackberry Road. And I'm the owner of the Omaha Design Center LLC.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other proponents here today on item number 19? Seeing none, are there any opponents on item 19? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 20, to consider a Class D liquor license for Pheasant 2.0 Sports Bar and Grill located at 3305 Old Maple Road.
I will open the public hearing on item number 20. Proponent here today, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Kabul Lloyd Malango, the owner of 3305 Old Maple Road, Slope Mountain LLC.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there any other proponents here today on item 20? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We have a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 21, to consider a Class I liquor license for North Atalia located at 17151 Davenport Street, Suite 101.
The public hearing on item number 21 is open today. Proponents, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim O'Neill. I'm with Baylor Evan, and that's 1248 O Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Sorry, it's the first time I've ever had to say that. I just joined the firm, so thank you for bearing with me.
You're on the roll.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant. It's a company with the Cheese Cake Factory Home Companies, and it's gonna be very exciting to have Italian made from scratch daily. And it's gonna be very exciting for the city. We want to have this new restaurant here. I'd be happy to answer any questions, may I?
Thank you. Is there any other proponents? I think Ms. Hogan is on Zoom. Can you hear us?
I can add. She's.
So, yes, I am here. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
All right, and I am a proponent as well. Stephanie Hogan, 18884 Mason Plaza, Oak Corn, 68022.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Looks like Goodwin stepped out. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 22, to consider a Class D liquor license for NP Mart 31 located at 6510 South 84th Street.
Public hearing is now open on item number 22. David, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Dave Houghton, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here on behalf of the applicant. 84th Street Petroleum LLC doing business with NP Mart 31, which is located at 6510 South 84th Street. This particular location, the acquisition was made three weeks ago, and they're operating under a temporary operating permit right now. And it's the old tobacco hut location. My client, Ann Gordon, is here. If you folks have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any that you might have. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents on item 22? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Item 23, to consider an addition application for Luke's Corner located at 6002 South 42nd Street to add an outdoor area. Public hearing is now open on item number 23. Is the applicant here today, proponent? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Luke Samsted. The address is 6002 South 42nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68107. For Luke's Corner, I am trying to get a beer garden added to my bar.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
Hi.
Hey.
How you doing?
Good.
I just want to make sure, I haven't gotten any communication from any neighbors around your bar.
Mm-hmm.
And, which doesn't surprise me, because your bar has a pretty good reputation for being a pretty quiet place.
Mm-hmm.
But I do want to make sure you understand that you will be obligated to maintain your business within the city's noise ordinances.
Yes. This is one of the main reasons that I'm trying to build the beer garden. What I'm gonna do is we are going to level the ground with the building, build a retaining wall to mitigate water, and then a privacy fence over it. And I eventually want to put an awning above it. I am doing this mainly for my neighbors. I keep in very good contact with my neighbors, because I'm in a neighborhood, and they're more important, because it's their home, their kids, you know? So I am doing this to try and mitigate the sound and mitigate any problems that might come about, especially as we get busier, because we keep getting busier and busier. And there have been nights where I have had lines outside the door. So to try and take care of that, to help with my neighbors, I'm trying to build a beer garden so there's an outside area, so we can get rid of the noise, as well as anybody just wandering around of any of that nature from the parking lot.
Okay, you're not gonna have bands out there?
No. No, I am, we are an old-school South Omaha bar, and we are just doing the same thing that we all grew up with.
Okay, so basically it's just gonna be a gathering area, smoking area.
Mm-hmm.
People hang out and drink.
Correct.
Like I said, your bar's got a great reputation. I frequented it. So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I got a quick question for you. Is this right near the middle schools, at Blue Stem Middle School?
Right next to your brothers. And I am putting a beer garden on the backside of the building. And I have also built an area for the parents on the backside of my building facing the school, and put cameras there, and put tables out there for the students, because I'm trying to work with him, because we're all in this together. And they, you know, we packed it in such a small area. So the school is my main priority, which is the reason why most days I don't open before 3:00, because they're children. So we gotta look out for the kids. So what I did was, I put tables, and I built parking area for all the parents and for the kids, put cameras on the tables, so we have cameras on the kids as well, and then went and talked to all the people that work in the school, telling them, here's how we're gonna do it, talking to the parents. And I've been out there actually, you know, trying to help them get around and help the buses get in and out as well.
Okay, we appreciate, I know the council and myself appreciate partnerships and being a good business and a good community partner, so appreciate that. I'll be glad to support this today. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, you made a statement that I might just say I love. The neighbors are more important.
Mm-hmm.
If half of our venues just understood that.
Mm-hmm.
And worked to ensure that when they're having events, when they're expanding outdoor space that they're considering and working with their neighbors, it would make our jobs a lot easier. So I just want to elevate that and say I appreciate your understanding of that and your communicating that today. Thank you.
Oh, yes. I mean, we're in this together, guys. And if you live next door to a bar, you know, I've worked in them most of my life, and we all know what happens. So just like, I'm building the beer garden, so the kids don't see the alcoholic standing outside drinking their beer and smoking a cigarette, you know? It's, we gotta work. And this isn't, I don't work in an easy industry, so it makes it, I have to be more vigilant to make sure that this stuff doesn't happen. Mm-hmm.
We had a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
I just want to take one second and say, I am very proud of you guys, and I thank you guys for everything that you guys have done, for all the words that you guys have spoken today on everything. It's all hard topics. I just want to say thank you, guys, for all the work you put in.
Thanks.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items 24 through 27 were held on August 19, 2025. Any council discussion? Got a motion and a second. No lights.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Row.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin.
I'm sorry, yes.
Goodwin.
I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 28 through 38 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent, I will open the public hearing. Are there any proponents here today on items 28 through 38? Is there, are there any opponents? Public hearing is, I'm sorry, opponent?
Yes.
Please.
Ted Potter, 2963 and a half Pacific Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. I wanted, I am an opponent of 26. Can I speak on that?
We're on 28 through 38 now.
Great. Okay. Well, that was what I came here to talk to you guys about. Anyway. Thank you. Bye.
The public hearing on that was last week. I just wanted to clarify for you.
Yeah, that was, I didn't catch it. I watched online, and I didn't catch that item number until I was watching it online at home. And that was a little bit what I wanted to talk about. I will do better making sure to read the agenda ahead of the meetings in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, where are we at? Opponents? Is there any opponents on items 28 through 38?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. You almost closed the hearing again before you looked up.
Doing the best I can, Larry.
Anyway, I'm opposed to number 31. I don't really appreciate spending money out of my tax dollars to send a representative of the city council around to National League of Cities, or Regional Cities, or even the County League of Cities. You should be discussing things with us and getting ideas from us, the citizens, not these outsiders from particularly out of state. So why don't you shave that out of the budget, spend that money doing some good to other people here that need it. Thank you.
Festerson. Goodwin. Mister President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 39, in ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 55 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding landscaping regulations and urban design code, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is amendment of the whole requested by the Planning Department.
Council discussion on item 39. Seeing none, is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Melton. Row. Festerson. Goodwin. Mister President.
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 41, in ordinance to authorize the issuance of a purchase order to Executive Janitorial Corporation in the estimated amount of $20,451 for janitorial services to be utilized by the facility's management division.
Public hearing is now open on item number 41. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 42, in ordinance to approve an agreement with DRB Farms for stabilized sewage sludge services.
Public hearing is open on item number 42. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 43, in ordinance to acquire private property for the construction of the Oak Hills Lift Station Replacement Project.
Public hearing is open on item number 43. Is there any proponents? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 44, in ordinance to approve a non-exclusive public road license agreement with Quick Current Nebraska LLC for a period of 10 years.
Public hearing on item number 44 is now open. Is there any proponents? On the Zoom? Catch it. Is Mr. Zane Brant on Zoom available?
Oh, yes, I'm here. Thank you.
You're recognized.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, this should just be a license agreement replacing the new fiber optics within the city and hopefully opening up some availability to both Omaha and some surrounding cities via Quick Current.
Zach, can you give us your address, please, for the record?
Zane, I'm actually a Sioux Falls native here, but we also have Ruben, who is the general manager of Quick Current. He might be a better listed here.
Okay, sorry about that, Zane. Thank you. Is there any other, let's see, is Ms. Grace Anderson, you're recognized. Ruben Zendehas, can you hear us? You're recognized if you can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you. Can, is the council able to hear me?
We hear you fine.
Perfect. Yes, my name is Ruben Zendehas. I'm the general manager for Quick Current Nebraska. We are telecommunications company that is majority owned by the Omaha Tribe of Nebraska. The company address is 106 South Tallman Street in Walt Hill, Nebraska. I am a resident of 122 South 122 Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Is Mr. Kenny Robertson?
He unfortunately had to step away.
Okay, no problem. I don't see anybody else on Zoom unless I'm missing somebody. Okay, is there any other proponents for item 44? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 45, in ordinance to approve a streetscape maintenance agreement with the Omaha Botanical Center, Inc., for the Old Market Garden site at 727 South 13th Street.
Public hearing on item number 45 is now open. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 46, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to a MD overlay district located at 5805 South 118th Circle.
Public hearing is now open on item number 46. Are there any proponents?
My name's Eric Rockwitz, 10208 South 97th Street, 68046. I'm the owner, proponent.
Thank you.
Can answer any questions.
Thanks. Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 47, in ordinance to approve the order form and master subscription agreement with Ready Rebound, Inc., to provide healthcare advisory services to assist injured firefighters to return to work quickly and safely.
Public hearing is now open on item number 47. Chief, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Kathy Bossman, Fire Chief, 1516 Jackson, here as a proponent and can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Hi, Deb Sander with City Human Resources, here to answer any questions. I also have with me Becky Nunley, who's our workers' compensation manager, and Adam Baugh, who's our workers' compensation analyst, that did some analysis on this, if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Hello, Matt Stoll from Ready Rebound. We're based out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and a proponent for this item.
Mr. Towey, welcome.
Thank you, Mister President. Trevor Towey, President, Omaha Professional Firefighters, 6005 Grover Street. Real quick background on this. January 2023, I identified a couple of problems. One, firefighters getting hurt. They want to get back to work really fast. Wasn't quite happening as fast as they'd like. Two, because of that, we had to have overtime costs to have firefighters replace them. What's the solution? Did some work, found Ready Rebound, they're the fix to this problem. Brought in lots of people from the city to help, so I want to thank everybody that did the work on this, Deb Sander and her team, Stephen Curtis and his team, another legal team, Bernard did a lot of work too, and Chief Bossman for accepting this proposal. So ask for your support on it. I think it's going to be a good thing for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I'll just say, I appreciate, it really was great collaboration between the leadership of Mr. Towey and labor relations and city law to get firefighters that protect and serve around the clock for the citizens of Omaha. And that's a tough job and you get injured. And this is a system, I was in the briefing, I appreciate having it on getting our firefighters treated quickly so they can get rehabbed and get back to doing what they love is protecting and serving for lives and property, the citizens of Omaha. So I appreciate the good analysis we had on this, so thank you.
Item 48, in ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classification entitled Facility Manager Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing is now open on item number 48. Proponents? Good afternoon, Deb.
Hi, Deb Sander for City Human Resources, here as a proponent for item number 48 and 49. They're both classifications, here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Chelsea Ship, Human Resources Department, also here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 49, in ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code by adding the employment classification entitled Trap and Skate Coordinator Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing is now open on item number 49. Are there any proponents here? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 50, in ordinance to amend Section 23-144 of the Omaha Municipal Code to permit a department head to request a hire above the minimum from the personnel board for any appointment to a classification and to amend Section 23-308 to raise the mandatory retirement age from 65 to 68 for uniformed personnel to reach 20 years of service.
The public hearing is now open on item number 50. Is there any proponents here? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 51, in ordinance to approve an agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for the police department to enhance the drone as first responder program.
Public hearing is now open on item number 51. Proponents?
Good afternoon. Frank Peck, Chief Pilot for the Omaha Police Department, South 15th Street. I'm here to answer any questions if needed.
Thanks, Mr. Peck.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other proponents here today? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 52, in ordinance to accept the bid from RTG Building Services, Inc., to provide janitorial services for Omaha Public Libraries, Aids Communication and Opposition.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 52. Are there any proponents here? Are there any opponents? Okay. And Ms. Marlane is online, if there are any questions. Good afternoon, Laura. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 53, in ordinance to amend Section 10-204 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Claims to Provide for Authorization to the Law Department to Resolve Claims Against a City That Is Not in Excess of $50,000.
The public hearing is now open on item number 53. Are there any proponents here today? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I know we're coming to the non-action items, but on item number 66, in discussion with the mayor's office, I am making a motion to lay over the public hearing on this item until Tuesday, September 23rd, and the scheduled vote on September 30th.
Got a motion to lay over item 66. Got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.[1731.53]